All right, guys, we'll be starting here in just a moment. If you can find your seats, please. Be sure to turn your phones to silent, which reminds me, I need to do that too with teenage daughters from time to time. They kind of forget where you're at. We'll be starting here in just a moment. Waiting on, and here he comes. Bill, would I, can I ask you to make sure that that mic is on, please? This one right here? It's for something coming up here in just a moment, so I need it on now. Okay. All right, before we start tonight's meeting, we'll have a prayer led by Councilwoman Carrie Carroll, and please join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
Faith helps us approach life with a sense of possibility rather than foreboding and helplessness. It dares us to imagine what we might be capable of. It enables us to reach for what we don't yet know with a measure of courage. It gives us resilience in times of difficulty and the ability to respond to challenges without feeling trapped. Our faith has taught us that whatever disappointments we might meet, we can try again, trust again, and love again. Amen.
All right, once again, welcome to City Hall. I will ask the clerk to start us off with roll, please.
Branch.
Here.
Bray.
Here.
Carol.
Here.
Graham.
Here.
Henry.
Here.
Hussey.
Here.
Mahalovich.
Here.
Prather.
Here.
Schulte.
Scrivner.
Here.
Okay, it is with honor we've had our roll call. And this is actually a miscellaneous item. Mr. Arthur Brown, I'm going to ask you to do me a favor. Could you grab that wireless microphone, please?
I'm here.
Yep. This is sort of the talk show host part of the meeting that I get to do from time to time. There is a special person here tonight that I would like to recognize, first time here at our, in our chambers, and that is the new president of Lincoln University, Mr. Kevin Roem. Dr. Kevin Roem. Kevin, if you could come up, please. I'll tell you just a small story about Kevin. I was on the selection committee that helped welcome him here to Jefferson City. And, hey, man, what's up? Long time no see. You know, it's not, it's not a lo, it's not often you see guys in leadership like us hug, but we've got a close relationship. You know, when I first met Kevin in my office here at the, at City Hall, we spoke for about an hour. We talked about Lincoln and the city for about 10 minutes. We spent about 50 minutes talking literally about our family and our wives and our parents and, and his grandmother and, and things like that, and the leaders that meant the most to us. So, I'll give you just a second to say hi to everybody, then I got a quick presentation for you.
Thank you. Good afternoon. I had no idea, so I'm really on the spot right now, but I'd like to say thank you so much for the warm welcome that I have received in Jefferson City. I know it was the right decision and the right place to be. And I have said publicly and privately, Lincoln University has the greatest desire to work with the city of Jefferson, Jefferson City, and be a great partner to the community. And anything that we can do to support the community, we're definitely here to do that. And so, Eric, anything we can do, let us know, because we're here to support the city. Thank you.
Kevin, thank you. Hey, Kevin, I have a small token of our city's appreciation. It's a key to the city. A lot of times, you don't get those until you've been at a job for 10 or 20, 30 years, but I know with your leadership style and the small amount of time that we have spent together, I'm really looking forward to working together. I think we can do a lot for the community, a lot for Lincoln together. Thank you very much. I always kind of wondered why Letterman runs. Now, I think I know. Okay, moving on to public hearings. First, we have a public hearing. We'll have third reading of bill associated with that, 2013-47.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri approving a preliminary PUD plan for property located at 2500 Tanner Bridge Place, described as part of the north half of the northeast quarter of Section 25, Township 44 North, Range 12 West, Jefferson City, Cole County, Missouri.
Janice.
Thank you, Mayor. This particular plan was reviewed by the Planning and Zoning Commission at their meeting on July 18th, and it was recommended for approval. The applicant requests approval of this preliminary PUD plan for a new restaurant and event center, banquet center at 2500 Tanner Bridge Place. And you'll notice that this is near the location, the intersection of Lorenzo Green Drive and The restaurant consists of a 4,500 square foot restaurant and event center. It'd be on two levels, and will include outdoor seating. The area that's being applied for, for the plan approval, is this area that's indicated in hashed marks. The total amount of the property is about 22 acres, and it does consist of additional area, but that area was not included in the PUD plan. There's a little close-up of the actual location. Driveway will be constructed off of Tanner Bridge Place. This is a little bit different perspective. Here's Tanner Bridge Place. It'll come, the driveway will come out of Tanner Bridge Place. There'll be an upper level parking lot and a lower level parking lot. And here's a perspective of the building. Be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions, staff? Okay, at this point in time, since this is a public hearing, we'll ask anyone in favor of 2013-47, if you could please come to the podium, please? Okay, anyone opposed to 23, excuse me, 2013-47? Okay, that will close the public part of the hearing. Any debate by council? Seeing none, roll call, please.
Branch.
Aye.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Motion passes. Next on our agenda is B underneath the public hearings. We have the 2013 property tax levy. No one had signed up for that. I'm assuming that's still the same. Our clerk had just recently collected these items here. At this point in time, I'd ask Nathan to give us a quick overview of that bill. Councilman Scrivner had asked earlier that we take up the bill in these proceedings. Bob, is that still your desire?
Yeah, that'd be fine if that's, if the council's agreeable with it.
Drew, is that all right? Okay. So, 2013-52, we'll have third reading, please.
An ordinance of the city of Jefferson, Missouri providing for the levy of city taxes and establishing the rate of taxation for the city of Jefferson, Missouri for the year 2013.
Mr. Betts.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. This is our annual property tax bill, and we have two sections of our property tax. The first is our general fund property tax, and it's currently set at 46 cents. The ceiling on that is 47.49 cents. We currently have it set at 46 cents. We also have a firefighter's retirement portion that's currently set at 9.61 cents, and the ceiling on that is 9.92 cents. This is something I hope the council takes up tonight, because we need to get it to the county clerk's office so they can be authorized. We have to do that by August 30th, so if we don't vote on it tonight, then we'll have to have a special session. So, otherwise, I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have about this.
Any questions, Drew, on 2013-52? Oh, sorry, not Drew. Bill. It's been a long week, even though it's just Monday. All right. Okay, at this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to amend the agenda to take up 2013-52 now as opposed to later.
So moved.
Seconded. Been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing none, voice vote, please. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign. Okay. Discussion or debate on 2013-52? Seeing none, roll call, please. Oops, sorry.
Did you do, maybe I just missed it, but did we do the public hearing on it?
Yeah, no one had signed it.
Okay.
Roll call, please.
Bray.
Aye.
Carol.
Aye.
Graham.
Aye.
Henry.
Aye.
Hussey.
Aye.
Mahalovich.
Aye.
Prather.
Aye.
Scrivner.
Aye.
Branch.
Aye.
We'll take a TV timeout just a second. Drew, could you please come here? Since we have two bills that are basically listed under C. All right, thank you, Drew. Yes, ma'am.
Sometimes at the beginning of the meeting, you'll ask if anyone's signed up for something and hasn't yet, but.
Oh, actually, I was just.
I don't know if you did that already. I just thought of it.
I was just getting ready to get to that.
Okay, thanks.
Hey, no problem. Okay, we have the budget hearing here, which is also our utility tax. I have 19 people signed up. The last person is Wyoming, is that correct? Is there anyone else that would like to sign up? Gone once, gone twice? Okay, that's.
I'm on the way. You can hear that.
Okay. And that name is? Anyone else? Okay, we will now go into the public hearing of Bill 2313-2014, which is the city budget, and also the utility tax receipts that goes with that. And we'll take up both bills, well, the one we'll take up later, the one we'll take up in a couple weeks. So, that hearing is officially open, and Drew, what'd you say as far as time? Five minutes per person?
About five minutes.
Okay. First person is Vicki. Need help with your last name, dear.
Shildmeyer.
Shildmeyer? Is that correct?
That's correct.
Vicki, thank you, welcome. For the record, please state your name and address, and welcome to City Hall.
Vicki Shildmeyer, 1803 Tanner Bridge Road. I'm representing Jefferson City Congregations United, which spearheaded formation of Citizens for Jeff Tran. Citizens for Jeff Tran wants to urge approval of the budget proposal as it stands now regarding transportation. We appreciate the council's support of this for the current routes and for handy wheels. We know these services are essential for approximately one-fifth of our neighbors in Jefferson City. Any of us could need public transportation at a future time if we're unable to drive. We look forward to the creation of a commission or other body to receive public input from transit stakeholders. That's the end of my comments, and I also distributed a statement by one of our members, Wayne Lee. Thank you.
Did everyone get that? I know Mr. Lee was not able to make it tonight. All right, Vicki, thank you for being here. Next to have Mr. Glenn. Pronounce your last name, please. Castalis, got it. Glenn, welcome. We could've rode together, we're neighbors.
Glenn Castalis, 1904 Veth, Jefferson City. Members of the city council, I come before you tonight to express my concern about some aspects of the proposed budget. I will not address all of my concerns, as time is limited. I ask each of you to have each department look for mission creep. It happens, and if eliminated, work productivity increases and fiefdoms are reduced or eliminated. Earlier this year, I reviewed most every email from the city-paid lobbyist who gets $25,000 a year to the city administrator. I did not see anything worth that kind of money. What other contracts are out there that could be eliminated? How many city vehicles are driven home on a daily basis? Why? Person may be on-call. I believe that if the on-call person is called in less than three times a week, they need to drive their own vehicle. We taxpayers should not be paying for their transportation. When I compared the proposed budget against the 2013 budget, I noticed that almost every department had an increase in salaries, yet the mayor and city administrator have stated several times that there are no raises in the budget. The numbers they have proposed speak differently. Which is the truth? Within the Parks and Recreation Division, I have major concerns about two areas and a question which needs to be answered publicly about a third. First, the easy one. What does it cost to maintain the greenway? Now, to the two areas that are of major concern to me and should be to every taxpayer in the city. The ice arena operation from 2008 through 2012 has shown losses in excess of $125,000, $150,000, $228,000, $174,000, $240,000, totaling more than $917,000 with a projected loss of more than $117,000 in this budget. The golf course operation during the same timeframe has shown losses in excess of $255,000, $211,000, $294,000, $270,000, $300,000, totaling more than $1,330,000 with a projected loss of more than $429,000 in this proposed budget. Private businesses operate such operations at a profit. Apparently, management, and that includes everyone in the chain of command, from the mayor, to the city administrator, the head of Parks and Rec, the Parks and Rec Board, down to the operation managers, have been unable or unwilling to do so. That needs to change immediately. These operations should be profit centers. The heads of Parks and Recreation, down to the operational managers, should be put on notice and held accountable. In the business world, people are fired for such poor business performance, and companies go out of business. I recommend these operations be made into profit centers or be sold. Mr. Mayor, you have stated on numerous occasions, you plan to run the city like a business. Now's the time to stop the rhetoric and take action. Thank you.
Thank you, Glenn, for being here. Next, we have on the agenda, Mr. Paul Van Horn.
I have a roof canal, so I'm not in the, I'm having trouble talking.
Okay. Hope you're okay, Paul. Next, I have Brian Wecamp.
Thank you, Your Honor. City, members of the city council, Brian Wecamp, 1125 London Court, Jefferson City. I just want to thank the council for adopting the 2014 budget and supporting transit, both the fixed route and the paratransit handy wheel service. For many of us here in Jefferson City, it is a vital service, which we depend on daily and would have a really tough time if we didn't have their service. And I look forward, as a member of Jefferson City Congregations United and Citizens for Jeff Tran, working with the council and the city officials to, in the future, improve the, improve the service of the public transit system. Thank you.
Thank you, Brian.
Thank you.
Thank you for having me here today. I'm Gloria Inlow. I'm here as the station manager of JCTV at 820 Chestnut Street on the campus of Lincoln University. Obviously, many of you know that JCTV's funding is in danger in the current proposed budget, so I'd like to take some time to just tell you a little bit about what JCTV does in the community. We provide 126 hours of programming every week. We never go dark. We run 24/7, but during the overnight hours, we run a community calendar where community organizations can post their events and flyers for free. At least one-third of our, of our programming is educational. JCTV provides instruction to Lincoln University students. Obviously, we have our broadcast journalism class, and we had a lot of students that were, that are affected by JCTV, and they're here today. But really, JCTV touches every student at Lincoln. We work with the business department. We work with cooperative extension. We work with the fine arts department. We work across all disciplines at Lincoln University to teach them not only about television broadcast producing, but to do some production work for them as well. We are also aiming to reach out to the Jefferson City High School. Currently, we have a memorandum of understanding with the Jefferson City High School that is under review, where Lincoln University and JCTV would provide training and instruction in broadcast production for one academic year. So, that starts next month and would run through May. In order for that agreement to be carried out, JCTV has to remain in operation. We can't do it, obviously, if we're not there. And that deal is something that we arranged in the early spring after our last discussion on budget cuts to kind of form new partnerships and find alternative revenue streams. And so, we're hoping that we can continue in that partnership and that we can serve the high school, just like we've served Lincoln for over 20 years now. We've also started collecting dues. We have over 50 dues-paying members, including 20 United Way member agencies, and we provide a lot of services for them. We did a PSA day back in the spring where 20 of those United Way agencies used us so that they could get their message out in a way they otherwise wouldn't be able to afford. We provide production services in studio for 12 groups who produce public access shows. We also accept programming from another 12 groups that do public access shows. And we cover a number of community events. We do Capitol caroling, the Christmas parade, the LU homecoming parade, Oktoberfest, Jazz Fest, Missouri Contemporary Ballet, the Parks and Recreation Ice Show, Salute to America, JCHS High School events, LU athletic events, the Centennial Parade, the Fire Department held last year. We do the chamber candidate forums at least twice a year, landmark awards, and we provide news on LU. Actually, our students do that, but it's something people can't learn about any other way. We are a digital playground for the public. Any resident of Jefferson City can come in, they can get training, they can produce a show, and they can check out equipment for little to no cost. We serve many minority populations, many disadvantaged groups that don't have access to airtime, and certainly don't have the funds to go out and purchase their own equipment and do all the production work on their own. Finally, we provide coverage of these city meetings and events. The city can use JCTV to produce educational programming about new initiatives or ongoing projects, like the convention center, and as a communications tool. I know you no longer have a communications manager, but JCTV can fill the void that some of those duties were. We can provide a lot of help in that area. And the majority of people do still watch council meetings on TV. It's a lot easier for people to watch them on TV than to log on, look for the streaming signal, and access that. So, LU has also contributed to this partnership. They've kicked in nearly $30,000 a year in in-kind costs, and close to half a million dollars in renovations and equipment purchases over the past six years. And currently, LU is also covering our salaries, because the city funding did run out this month. So, they would like to continue this partnership, and so would I.
All right, thank you, Gloria. Any questions for Gloria? Row.
Gloria, would you remind us what channel we can watch the telecast from?
Yep, if you're on MediaCom, you can watch it on Channel 81, and if you have Century Link, you can watch it on Channel 99.
Are those the only two outlets you can watch it on?
No, if you have a digital tuner in your TV, you can watch it on 12.2 as well. And most people that have a flat-screen TV have that digital tuner built into their TV.
Okay. Any other questions, Gloria? Carrie.
Thank you, Gloria. I know you mentioned partnerships with the Jefferson City Public Schools, which is a great idea, and I wondered if they would be contributing any funds. It sounds like they are.
Yes.
If they are, could you get us information before, let's say, Monday night's budget meeting, or even prior to that, if you could send it to us? Because that could influence our decision, depending on what level of funding they were able to provide, because we didn't really have that as a factor in some of our budget discussions.
Sure, I can send that over.
Gloria, I know at one time, at one of our budget meetings within the last couple weeks, you had said that you were going to give us a breakdown of what some cost might be, like for the Christmas parade or something like that. Have you sent those yet?
Yeah, I sent that out to the council. I don't know if I sent it to you.
Okay. I need a, I can get a copy of it, but I do need a copy of it.
Okay.
Bob?
Gloria, the, you mentioned different groups that were producing programming and, like, 50 dues-paying memberships.
Mm-hmm.
And, of course, Jefferson City High School. Could you, even if it's just an estimate at this time, could you give us an idea of what funding that you're, that you've been able to achieve outside of the Jefferson City funding?
Through the membership dues and the different fundraisers we've done, we've raised about $10,000 this year.
And that would include Jefferson City High School, or do you know what?
No, that does not include that deal.
Do you have any idea, just, I mean, if you just recently did the?
Well, they have a memorandum of understanding, and they're reviewing it right now, so I don't really want to speak on their behalf, because there's different options that are in that, depending on how long they want to pursue this relationship.
Okay. And is there, are there any other, anything that you see on the horizon that might provide additional funding at this point?
Yes, we're working with different departments at Lincoln to do production work for them, and that would come with a fee schedule attached to it as well. And the Missouri Bar has also just recently reached out to us and asked us if we could partner with them on some projects.
Good. Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Gloria? All right, thank you for being here, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Next, I have on the list here, Ms. Linda McInnany. Linda, welcome. Good seeing you again.
Thank you very much, Mayor. It's nice to be here, and councilmembers. Thank you for what you do for our community, and I know it's not easy to do what you do, and particularly in these economic times, so, thank you. My name is Linda McInnany. I, my husband and I live at 818 Troy Drive in Jefferson City. I'm here in support of JCTV as well, and I will be very brief, since we have a number of people talking, or speaking tonight. I hope you, I hope you give the university time to provide, to continue to provide this service to our community. And, and I know that budget, the budgets are tight, and it's, these are tough times for, with revenues and expenses, but I would ask that you do consider the fact that it is not easy for the university to come up with funding with instant notice, almost. The funding, as you know, was cut last year, and, of course, it's proposed now to be cut again down to zero. So, I would, I would implore you to please give them the opportunity to do what they're doing right now, and that's to provide additional funding. I've, I've produced and been a host of a show for, I think, nine-plus years. I consider it to be an opportunity to get word out about whether it's United Way agencies or, or agencies and issues within our community, and I hope that we can continue to do that. So, thank you for what you do, and thank you for this consideration.
Linda, thank you for being here. Next, I have Jeff Bassenson. Is that correct, Jeff? Welcome, sir.
My name is Jeff Bassenson. I live at 1420 Greenberry Road. I'm here on behalf of asking that you keep the funding for JCTV. Right now, I am the senior video producer for the Missouri State Highway Patrol. I got that job, I'm in my 20th year now. I got that job in 1994, primarily from the training I received from JCTV when I first moved here in 1991. I'm an example of where the training at JCTV helped me be able to get a job, maintain that job, and, and do some good video production work for the state. JCTV is a great place to learn, learn that trade, learn that skill. People can use that to create programming on anything that their heart desires, and JCTV is the venue through which they can show that programming. I'm also here on behalf of Jazz Forward Initiative. It's the 501(c)(3) nonprofit that puts on the Capitol Jazz Fest each year. JCTV in years past has shown the programming, and we appreciate that very much. It's a, it's a one-day event, and if you can't make it that day with live performances and... It's a one-day event, and if you can't make it that day, it's live performances in downtown Jeff City. JCTV will play it again, so the people of Jefferson City can see what kind of performances, jazz performances are going on, and they show them throughout the course of the year, so you can still see that. You can also see other programs as well, you know, if you miss a live performance. If JCTV goes dark, Jazz Fest won't be seen here anymore. However, there are other channels around the country that do run some of the programming, some of the performances. I think it would be sad if Jefferson Cityans had to go to Lake County, California, Sebastopol, Wisconsin, Mount Iron, Minnesota, Boxford, Massachusetts, or Farmington, New Hampshire to see the programs, see some of the jazz performances, because those are public access channels around the country that are showing, showing the Jazz Fest videos. I would hope that JCTV would still be around to be able to show the programming that's happening in the backyard of Jefferson Cityans, and that's pretty much all I've got.
Thank you, Jeff, for being here. Any questions for Jeff tonight? Ralph?
Jeff, do the public stations, do you all share programming regularly?
There's a website that you can go to called pegmedia.org. Producers of the programming can upload, and from that location, public access channels from around the country can download it for a fee. I'm one of the producers, I'm the person who uploads it to that, to that website, and those channels, public access channels, are the only ones who have access to it. They're the ones who download it and then show it, their own programming. Just to give you an idea, there's also, UMKC has a couple of channels. They have 250,000 viewers in their area, and they just downloaded about three or four of the programs just in the last month. There's, Modesto, California, has 80,000 viewers, and they've downloaded some of the programs, too. But yeah, you can go to pegmedia.org, upload it there, and other access channels can get the programming there.
Thank you very much.
Jeff, I have a question for you. Maybe Gloria could help me on this, and if you don't know tonight, either one of you, that's fine. Is there a way to tell? I mean, I know that in my radio career, there was always a way to kind of tell certain times of the year how many listeners you had. Is there any way to tell? I'm getting a no. There's no way to tell how many people are actually watching tonight?
Not that I know of, no.
Okay. All right.
I just know what...
Appreciate your honesty. I mean, I kind of thought that might be the answer, but I wasn't sure.
I'm sorry. Go ahead.
I know if you look like at Ustream or something like that, it will show you how many people are in the audience at any one time, type of deal. Okay. All right. Any other questions for Jeff? Jeff, thanks for coming again. Appreciate it.
Mr. Mayor, council members, thank you for your time.
Thank you, sir. Next, I have Dr. Kevin Rome.
Thanks. Good evening again, and I would be the first to say, I understand how difficult it is to deal with such matters as budget, and it's never easy. And so I know you're grappling with many budget items and not just Lincoln University and JCTV, but I will ask that you consider the services provided and what we can do for the community, but even beyond that, I ask you to think about the relationship between the university and the city. And when I think about that, I think about the larger picture. I believe that Lincoln University is one of the larger employers in the city, and we bring many students to this community, and those students invest in the community. They spend money. They contribute to the tax base. They live in the community. So we bring resources to the community that helps Jefferson City. And so the question that I have is, in a relationship with the city, what should be expectations? What is reasonable as we have a partnership or a collaborative relationship? What level of investment should the city have in its institution? Because we have a great investment in the city of Jefferson City. And I would like to see that relationship grow and flourish in many different ways, not just JCTV. So what I ask is that we think about that relationship, and what should we expect from the city in that relationship? And what do you expect from Lincoln University in that relationship? And maybe that's a conversation we can have as we move forward, because when you invest in Lincoln University, you're investing in the community, and when we invest in Lincoln University, we're investing in the community. So that's what's most important to us, the relationship, and maintaining that positive relationship as we move forward. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Rome, for being here. Appreciate it. Good seeing you again. Okay. Next, I have Ms. Ann Harris. Ann, welcome.
I was here last year to speak on the same subject. I'd like to speak in favor of funding for JCTV again. I think you've heard all of the compelling arguments about the value of the TV station to the community. I'd like to take this opportunity, because I may not get another opportunity, to commend the staff of JCTV who are sitting in the back of the room. They've done an incredible job over the last seven years or so for a very small staff, for a peg station like ours. They usually have two to three times more people working on all of the initiatives, all of the programming, all of the technology, and all of the instruction that goes on at such a station. So I'd like to make sure that everybody understands that, how hard they work and what a bargain they are at the price that they charge. Also, speaking as a citizen and a taxpayer, I believe that the programming that JCTV provides, in terms of these sessions, budget hearings, and other governmental access to the city of Jefferson, is pretty valuable, and we should all acknowledge that more transparency is usually better than less transparency. I am concerned that if we are relying on a streamed programming of these meetings and of these council deliberations, that a lot of people will be left out. They will not have access to the programming the way they do now. Obviously, we can't all fit in this chamber, so we have to rely on technology to make these proceedings available to the public. Thank you very much, and thanks for listening.
Ms. Harris, thank you for being here tonight. Next, I have Michael Downey.
Hi, I'm Michael P. Downey. I live at 1906 Glenwood here in Jefferson City, and I'm the general manager of KJLU, one of two locally-owned media here in Jefferson City. There's only two locally-owned media left here in Jefferson City, KJLU and JCTV. And so I am encouraging you to continue funding for this locally-owned media that can provide services to everyone that Gloria has talked about and that Ann Harris has talked about. You know, there's been talk about whether this is an essential service or not, and it's an essential service if you use it. If you don't use it, then it's probably not an essential service. But it's all part of this web, this United Way web, the Jefferson City Daycare, the Red Cross, all these organizations that utilize JCTV. And then you have folks that utilize those organizations. So it's not a standalone organization. It's part of this great web, and I believe if you allow this to go dark, you have no idea what you're going to miss until it's gone. And so I would just encourage you to support your local media. Thanks.
Michael, thanks for being here. Any questions for Michael tonight? All right. Thanks, sir. Moving down the list here. Sorry, I can't read this. I put my glasses on. Is it Gabby? Robbie? It's something with a W at the end. I know that. It's either Gabby or Robbie or Bobby. W. Any takers? Going once, going twice? Okay. Next, I have Terrence Brown. Is Terrence still here? Terrence may have already left. Has Terrence decided not to speak?
I yield the floor.
You yield the floor? Okay. I understand. Thank you very much. Okay. Next, Jonathan Jackson. There's Jonathan. Thank you, sir, for being here tonight.
My name is Jonathan Jackson. I am a student at Lincoln University. My address is 825 Chestnut Anthony Hall, Lincoln University of Missouri. On behalf of the journalism majors at Lincoln University, I would like to urge the city of Jefferson City, Missouri, to keep the funding of JCTV. It is one of the few ways we have at Lincoln University to connect and build a rapport with the community. It will hinder the journalism students at Lincoln University. We use this media outlet to better us and prepare us for our future careers. Once it is gone, we no longer have a place of our own to produce the goods. It's a great resource to have as a student. I appreciate this moment to speak on it, and thank you. And that concludes my comments.
Terrence, thank you. I know we've met before. I appreciate you being involved in our local community. Any questions for Terrence? Oh, I'm sorry. My bad. Okay. Next, I have Wyoming. Is that correct? Good evening and welcome.
Hi, I'm Wyoming Rosette, 620 Boonville Road, Jefferson City. Dear members of the Jefferson City Council, it has come to my attention that the city's considering cutting JCTV's annual funding, and that reduction in resources could effectively eliminate JCTV's existence altogether. I'm here to discourage you from taking such a course of action. I'm an assistant professor of journalism at Lincoln University. One of Lincoln University's numerous commitments is to provide higher educational opportunities to the Jefferson City community, and JCTV has been a partner with its Department of English, Foreign Language, and Journalism for many years in fulfilling those goals. JCTV has been an essential tool and training ground for students seeking a major and career in television broadcasting. Many of LU's journalism students make use of their facilities every semester by requirement or election. We have nearly 100 journalism majors, approximately half of those concentrate on print-based journalism, while the other half seek degrees in broadcast journalism. These broadcast journalism students will interact with JCTV many times during their studies. They write, produce, and anchor their own new shows that are produced in the JCTV studio. JCTV then, in turn, airs these programs about LU news and activities on cable, as well as streaming over the web. The JCTV staff is always ready to help LU students. They frequently assist our students with required editing projects when no LU staff is available. In summary, JCTV is an extremely valuable resource to LU's journalism program. It is almost impossible to imagine our program's future without the assistance of JCTV. Please maintain the JCTV budget as much as practically possible. Thank you.
Owen, thank you for being here tonight. Any questions for our guests?
Just a quick question, Professor. How many journalism students are there at LU?
About 100.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? All right. Moving down the list, did Rod make it by chance?
Item C.
What's that?
Item B.
Okay. Last, I have Mr. Leonard Steiman on this issue, under item C.
Leonard Steiman, 110 North Lincoln, Jefferson City. Cable TV, MediaCom, and JCTV. If you didn't notice, Mr. Eric Strump, when he was running for mayor, used it quite a bit. It was his local campaign, one of them. I didn't use it. And if you want to find out information about how many people are watching MediaCom, all you have to do is contact MediaCom, because every time it goes on the Channel 81, it's automatically clicked. They have that type of process today. That's how they know how much interest they have in selling news media and commercials. Every time you turn it on 81 during that period of time, it is counted. As neighbors of Jefferson City, we could help ourselves out by not only having a neighborhood watch, but in my neighborhood, I help my community out. If I see an elderly person that cannot mow their grass, cannot clean up the front of their driveway or otherwise, if I got the time, I assist. I'm recommending this for all of our neighbors of Jefferson City to do this. That way, we know that our neighbors are good neighbors, and we know that they're still in good shape. There's a lot of people that are not in real good health today, and I appreciate it if everybody would do the same thing that I do. Thank you.
That wraps up our budget portion of the hearing tonight underneath number C, under public hearings. At this point in time, it's not on the agenda, but I'm going to open it up for council comment on comments or questions that you might have with staff that you might want answered after some of the comments that we heard or questions tonight. We'll try to limit this to about five minutes. Mr. Carlos.
Yes, I have a question, I guess, as relates to the franchise tax for MediaCom. How much does the city receive for the franchise tax? And also, where does that franchise tax money, does it go to general funds, or where does that money go to?
Bill, would you like to answer that tonight, or answer it next Monday night, along with all the other budget questions that we're going to have for you?
Yeah, I can answer it exactly next Monday night, the exact number, but it's roughly about $340,000, and that goes into the general fund revenue.
Okay.
So if you want the exact number, I can get it to you next Monday, for sure.
All right. Mr. Henry.
Thank you.
Andrew, I think we had this discussion before. That money was actually never, for whatever reason, was never put into JCTV, correct?
Yeah, it's never been dedicated to that purpose. It goes in the general fund and then pays out.
Was there a specific reason as to why that was never, has never taken place?
Well, because the franchise fee didn't set it up to go directly into it, it just never was. I suppose in any event, it would always come to the general fund first, but that was done primarily by Nathan's predecessor, his city attorney, B. Allen Garner.
Could that be seen like any other franchise tax, whether it's from Amrin or...
Sure.
Gas company, whatever it might be? I mean, it's a utility tax?
Yes. I mean, it's like most, we have very few specifically dedicated taxes.
Okay.
Counselman Henry's question, though, is certainly reasonable in that many cities dedicate their franchise tax, or their cable franchise tax, to that purpose or part of it.
Okay. Anything else? Bob?
I would, I just want to clarify that the franchise tax is for all of the revenues from, or it's based on all of MediaCom. It's not just based on the portion of JCTV. So while you can look for revenue sources anywhere you can find them, they could come from the franchise tax of JCTV, they could come from utility tax on Amrin, or utility tax on cell phones, or wherever. There's nothing about the JCTV tax, other than the fact it's just based on MediaCom, I mean, the MediaCom tax, that would indicate that it should be dedicated to JCTV. It certainly could be, but there's really no connection there that I see, other than that they just both happen to be cable.
Mr. Henry.
And respectfully to Councilman Grivner, I'm not saying that money should all be dedicated to JCTV, but some of it, to me, obviously, some of it should. Thank you.
Okay. Any other comments by council or questions you want staff to try to answer between now and next Monday night? Carrie.
When I mentioned it before, that if Gloria could get us information from the schools and that figure, because it would really be nice if staff could look at, I don't know if it would be a portion of the franchise tax from MediaCom or what could be done, but you have in the budget a figure of $5,000 already, and I don't know, adding that with the public schools portion with maybe anything else that we could add to it, it would be nice if that $5,000 would go for JCTV rather than hiring some other camera service out there. It'd be nice if it could go for that. And I know in the previous year's discussion, we talked about Lincoln University bringing new leadership. We had excellent leadership in the past, and interim was excellent... We had excellent leadership in the past, and interim was excellent leadership, and now we have Dr. Rome, who's got vision and excitement, and really wanting to build a relationship with the city, and coming very tactfully, and not asking for us to, not asking for a lot, but just kind of wanting to start off, I think, on the right foot, and welcome an opportunity to partner with the city. And you brought up a good point, and I thought last time I saw in the chamber information that Lincoln was maybe the 11th largest employer in Jefferson City. I mean, we're talking about a lot of employees, a lot of students, and if there's anything at all we can do, even if it's small resources that we have currently in the budget, I'd like to see, maybe if staff could give us some guidance, Bill, on what you might think we could do after we get the figures from Gloria. Thank you.
One comment, the $5,000 that I currently have in my budget is for a camera person hired by our IT staff. So, just to make that clear.
You mean a city, it'd be somebody on city staff?
A city employee, correct.
City employee. Thank you.
Any other comments or questions of our staffs, things you want staff to get together on in the next week? Our next budget meeting is a week from tonight. Mr. Henry.
Yes, I just had a quick question for Nathan. Nathan, is there anything right now that the city contributes to Lincoln University besides the funding that we were for JCTV?
You'd raised that before, and we kind of looked at that. Certainly, there's been projects that we have done, where we have done some things for Lincoln. In terms of an ongoing basis, there's nothing we really do for Lincoln that we don't do for everybody else. We do provide police and fire protection for Lincoln. Of course, Lincoln has their own police force as well, but we do help out with that. But there's no specific kinds of programs like that that we do.
Thank you.
Yes, sir, Carlos.
I guess, if I could, maybe this would be a question for Gloria, and she can get back with us, as it relates to the total cost of operating JCTV, because some people think that the $110,000, $110,000 a year fully funds JCTV. So I guess if I could get a total number as relates to what it actually costs to run JCTV, then I think that some of us have a better picture of what we have. If you don't have that number tonight, you can get that to us.
Yeah, we have that number tonight. When the city decided to hire a station manager, they increased JCTV's funding from $85,000 a year to $165,000 a year. And we actually have three staff members, and their salaries and benefits alone are about $159,000 a year. So we have $6,000 left over out of that original sum to cover equipment purchases, repairs, consumables, anything that comes up.
Gloria, I have a question. I don't need the answer now. I know that you're going to send me, and if you wouldn't mind sending it to me tonight, because I'm actually working on a lot of stuff, as you could imagine with the budget, even behind the scenes, even though I've already proposed my budget to the Council. It's kind of a moving target, things change. It's a fluid document, as an old buddy of ours used to say, in the JCs. I really need that cost per event.
Okay.
I think that would be something that I'd like to see.
I actually have it with me, and I can leave the document with you, if you like.
It'd be great.
But it's about $68,000 a year for all the meetings that we do for the city, the Parks and Rec, I Show, Capitol Caroling, the Christmas Parade.
Well, I'd like to see a breakdown per event.
Sure. I can get that for you.
Have a better idea. And then, another question I have, you don't have to tell me tonight, but I'd be curious. Are the staff members that I understand from Mr. Carlos's question, that we are, as a city, providing funding for, how much of that time is spent on other things than just community events? How much of that is spent on?
JCTV employees.
Correct.
I'd say our time is divided pretty equally in thirds. We serve the community, we serve an educational function, and we serve the government function. And I'd say we...
So our function would be about a third?
About a third, yeah.
Okay. Bob.
I'm going to try to repeat what I think I heard you say, is that the city was providing $165,000.
Yes.
And all but about six of that is what it took to cover staff. Is that correct?
That's correct.
So if the city's providing $165,000, what is your total budget?
Well, the city's not providing $165,000.
Well, I'm saying when the city was providing.
That was the entire budget, the 165.
So the entire budget was $165,000?
Yeah, and we did do some fundraising and stuff for extra expenses. We've always done that, but it's never been significant.
Okay. And so then, if we cut that back then, what, to 110, is that what we provided this past year? And you said that now that that money is no longer being received, because we expended the entire 110, Lincoln University's covering salaries now?
Yes, they are.
Okay, so your total budget is essentially $165,000 a year.
Yeah, there's not a lot of wiggle room there.
Okay, all right, thank you.
And just so I understand, and out of that, it's a third, a third, a third, as far as where you spend your time?
Yes.
Is that the right analogy? Is Ann here, is that right?
Yes.
Okay, thank you, Gloria. Hey, and by the way, I'm going to, oh, go ahead, Carrie.
Does Lincoln University have anything budgeted this year? Or, I know that our budgets kind of overlap in an odd way, but do they have a figure in there for JCTV?
I don't believe so, other than our in-kind expenses, yeah.
Allergies kind of kicked up this weekend. When is your budget?
Our current budget that we're operating under started June 1st, July 1st. So it's, yeah, it's already been approved and underway.
Anything else from Council? All right, I have one last comment. This is to Gloria and everyone here about JCTV. As the mayor this year, and this year's budget, one of the toughest calls I had to make was the reduction of funds for JCTV. I hope there's something we can do somewhere in between. But when I was looking at essential services, fire, police, all the above, it was something that unfortunately I had to cut, and I apologize. But unfortunately, as Kevin knows, we've had this conversation a lot of times, when you're in this seat, so to speak, there's very tough decisions, and I apologize for that, but just want to let you know where I'm coming from. Gloria, thanks for being here, and thanks for all your help throughout this process. Okay, at this point in time, we will take an eight-minute recess, and we'll be back in eight minutes. We will start Part 2.0 of this meeting. It's about 7:14 on August the 19th. We just wrapped up our public hearing on the 2013-14 city budget, and also the 2013-14 grocery receipts utility tax. Drew, do we have to vote on the utility tax tonight?
I think that's just part of the budget.
Is it just part of the regular budget, we'll do it next Monday, or when?
No, I guess we need to do it tonight.
Within, what's that?
Sheila's yelling at me, we have to do it tonight.
Okay. And which bill is that, clerk? It's not a bill, so at this... Drew, would you give me a motion that we could ask for, please? At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to keep our 2013-2014 gross utilities tax receipts the same.
Well, I guess so.
It's been moved. I don't see it in there, Drew, so we have a motion and a second. Who was the second? Was that Carrie? Thank you, ma'am. All right. Any discussion, Drew, or Sheila?
We're in favor of it.
Okay. Anyone opposed? Okay. All right. Do you want to give us a quick, low down on exactly what that is, Drew?
It is the tax on utilities, and it's set at 7%. Shaking head, yes.
And the motion is to leave it the same?
It is the maximum that we could, there isn't, you can't raise this one. It's at the maximum level authorized by, prior to Hancock.
Okay, and the motion to, and there's a motion on the floor to leave it the same. Discussion by Council. Seeing none, I feel you're ready to vote. There's no debate, I'm assuming? Roll call, please.
Branch?
Aye.
Bray?
Aye.
Carroll?
Aye.
Graham?
Aye.
Henry?
Aye.
Hussey?
Aye.
Mahalovich?
Aye.
Prather?
Aye.
Scrivner?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next, we'll move into Number 7, which is Minutes and Reports filed here at City Hall. If you would like to be on one of our boards or commissions, you can contact Gail Strope, our HR Director, or you can go to jeffcitymo.org and fill in an application there. Next, we'll go into Council Committee Reports. First, Ms. Carrie Carroll of the Admin Committee. Carrie.
Thank you. Administration Committee had a special meeting last Wednesday morning to discuss the floating holidays, which has moved forward to bills introduced tonight. Our next scheduled meeting is Wednesday, August 28th, but pending what's on that agenda, we may cancel that if there's not enough items to have on there. So if that's the case, Gail, we'll send out a notice. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Next, the Finance Committee. Mr. Sean Schulte could not be here tonight, and filling in for him as Vice Chair, Ralph Bray.
I don't have a report, but I can make an announcement that the next Finance Committee meeting will be next Tuesday at 7:30 across the hall.
All right, thank you, Ralph. Next, we'll move into Public Safety, which is chaired by Rick Prather.
No reports since the last meeting, and our next meeting will be Thursday, August 29th, across the hall, after the Brown Bagel meeting.
All right, thank you, Rick. Moving on, Public Works and Planning, Mr. Bob Scrivner.
Mr. Mayor, we have not met since our last report. Our next meeting is scheduled for this Thursday, August 22nd, at 7:30 a.m. across the hall. We have several items on a consent agenda. Old business, we will be talking about the Jefferson City Hangar Association ground lease renewal again, revision to a forestry article in the city code. New business, there will be a fluoride discussion by Gilbert Cole, who is the General Manager of the Water Company in town. Capital Mall Development Agreement, Stone Ridge Village TDD Expansion, Cole County Juvenile Officer Parking, and Frog Hollow Road Project update, with subheading there, Jefferson City School District Development Agreement, and a contract amendment with Barton West for Frog Hollow Greenway Bridge. And we've got some other items, but I think I'm, I think that's enough. Big agenda this time.
Looks like Matt and his staff have been busy behind the scenes. Okay, next we have, are there any liaison reports to my right? Any liaison reports to my left? Mr. Bray.
Actually, I should also report that, an announcement that the next Budget Committee will meet next Monday at 5:30.
All right, thank you, Ralph. Appreciate that. Okay, next, we'll move into Number 9, Appointments by the Mayor. At this point in time, we'll entertain a motion to accept.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded. Always voice, right, Drew? Any discussion? Seeing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Appreciate all the new people serving on our boards and commissions. It obviously helps our city run a lot better. Next, at this point in time, underneath Number 10, we'll entertain a motion to amend our agenda, to have Ms. Ibono with the Chamber give us an update on a particular project. Is there a motion to do so?
So moved.
It's been moved by Bob and seconded by Mr. Henry. Any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, same sign, motion passes. Missy, welcome. Thanks for being here. I know we've been at this for a little while, over the last couple of weeks, talked about it in our pre-meeting. I think you have some good news for our community. Welcome, and thank you for being here.
We have been working on it very diligently, and thank you, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Ms. Ibono, and I'm Director of Economic Development for the Jefferson City Area Chamber of Commerce. And the Chamber has been working, like the mayor said, with a business attraction project since April, actually. This company is based in Bloomington, Illinois, and they will produce bags for a local dog food manufacturer that's located in our region. They propose to bring raw material in by rail, they will produce the bag, they will ship the bag to a third-party printer to have it printed and laminated, and then the printer will ship the bag back to this company, who will then cut and perforate the bag. And then, the company will then ship the bag to the dog food producer, who will fill the bag with product, and then distribute. So it's quite a lot of shipping and a lot of moving of this particular product. But originally, when the company first indicated that they were interested in Jefferson City, they were really interested in our 50,000-square-foot spec building that we have in the business, the partnership business park. And quickly, they determined that there were two things that they really needed that the spec building was not able to provide, and that was, number one, they really needed a rail-serve site, and number two, the building just really wasn't configured to produce the type of product that they needed to produce. And so, we proposed to them a 25-acre parcel that the Chamber does own, that's just west of Alpla, and it sits on the corner of Sturtzer Road and Algoa Road. And so, the Chamber owns 25 acres right there at the corner, but again, the company didn't need the full 25 acres, so we carved off approximately 9.16 acres for the company to The company would construct a 30,000 to 40,000-square-foot facility, with plans to expand in the future, and the building would be constructed by a local contractor and financed locally as well. They would be investing at least $3 million in real and personal property, and again, they're pretty confident that they would be adding more investment in the next three years. They would create 20 jobs to start, and again, they feel confident that they would actually create more jobs than 20, but again, just being very conservative with their numbers, 20 is what they would like to commit to. Over a three-year period, they would create 20 jobs to start. It would be a 24/7 operation, so it would be three shifts per day, and they will be hiring very high-skilled individuals. They would be paying an hourly wage of $17.50 to $22.50 an hour, and the average wage for Cole County is $18.19. And so, they would be paying right up there with the average wage for Cole County. So they have been on a fast track in the business attraction and economic development world. This has gone, this has been just a blazing project, and the mayor can attest to, when, like I said, when they first contacted us in April, we've been working pretty fast and furiously on this project. So I will say that the Chamber Board has a meeting on August 27th, where we'll be reviewing the sale and land contract at that time, but I did just want to come tonight and give you a project overview, Mr. Mayor, and if anybody has any questions for me, I'd be more than happy to answer them.
Any questions for Missy? Ralph.
Missy, you said they might expand. Would they do that, working with their present customer in the region, or would they go beyond that customer base?
Actually, there are several customers that they supply to in this region. The dog food manufacturer is just one, and they will be supplying to other people in the state of Missouri as well.
Mr. Carlos.
Missy, are they requiring any type of special assistance from the city, any type of tax breaks, or anything like that from the city of Jefferson to bring this company here?
The site that they are looking at is in an enhanced enterprise zone, and that is an area where the city actually acted several years ago with an ordinance to provide benefits to companies that locate in the enhanced enterprise zone. And the benefits include a 10-year abatement on just real property, so on just the building, they would receive a 50% tax abatement for a 10-year period. So we are assuming that that will be approximately $140,000 total for a 10-year period. So again, the tax abatement, because they will be locating in the enhanced enterprise zone, it's a 10-year tax abatement, 50% for just real property.
Anyone else to move up and answer questions? Bob.
If I understand that correctly, Missy, currently, there's just land there now, so the tax on the land is considerably less than the tax will be on the land once, or on the land and building, once a building's bought, or built. So we'll abate 50%, but that 50% will still mean we'll be getting an increase, the county and the school district and all taxing entities will be receiving, or that get property tax will be receiving, an increase over this 10-year period, even though they're abating half of that increase, so to speak.
Correct. And you're absolutely right, this is a greenfield site currently, and so the tax revenue on that greenfield site is very, very small, and so schools, city, county, will all be receiving, again, that $140,000 over a 10-year period, coming in because of this project.
And then, then there is no abatement on personal property, so the equipment that they put into that, uh, facility to manufacture these bags will be taxed at the full rate.
Correct.
Plus the, whatever, uh, economic value that you get from having 20 new jobs in the community.
Any other questions for our guest? Thank you for all your work behind the scenes. Uh, and I know a lot of times at Ground Breakings, we say, "These things aren't easy." Well, we know full well that, uh, in, in these trying times, um, that they are tough to get these kind of deals together. Uh, I'm assuming that this would be a great opportunity for some of our misplaced employees of our, our Donnelley.
Absolutely. You know, we have wonderful, skilled workers in Jefferson City, and although, you know, this is just 20 jobs to start, I think we have potential to grow this company and, um, help the, our, our Donnelley's people, our, our Donnelley employees that have been displaced.
Okay. All right, thank you, Missy, for being here. I appreciate you taking the time. I also want to reach out and, uh, thank, uh, Joe Schappers of the chamber for being here also tonight. Okay, next we have, uh, announcements by mayor, council, and staff. I think Mr. Carlos has a, uh, upcoming event along with Carrie that he wants to mention.
Yes, uh, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to remind the community about, uh, on Saturday, August the 24th, from 9:00 a.m. to 11:00, at the Capital West Christian Church, uh, which is located at 1315 Fairgrounds Road, is formerly the Great, uh, Central Lumber Company. There will be a Fourth Ward Town Hall meeting. We're asking everyone to please come out. If you have any concerns that you would like to, uh, bring out, uh, please bring those concerns, and we'd just love to hear from the public. Thank you.
All right, anything to add? Carrie? All right, thank you, Carlos. Uh, any other comments under number 11 as far as announcements? Seeing none, I have one announcement. Uh, I talked to Drew about this earlier. Uh, per the city charter, it's my job once a year to, uh, give an evaluation of our city administrator. That time has come again. I'm asking you as the council to, uh, come up with your comments, ideas, uh, on exactly, uh, the kind of job you think Nathan's done over the last, uh, year, and I will be meeting with you guys individually. Uh, Laura will be setting those up, uh, here in the next couple of weeks, but it's a good time to, uh, uh, look at where we're at as a community and hopefully move things forward. Next, we have, yes, sir, Carlos, I'm sorry.
Is there some type of, uh, format that we're looking at to judge him on, or we just talking, just, how's this format gonna look, I guess?
I think what I'm actually going to do this go-around is, is, is give you the, uh, form that Gail gives me, and that way, when we sit down, we'll be looking at, at the exact same goals and objectives of last year, and, uh, what you may want as a councilman, for instance, uh, those to be in the future. Uh, I think it's a good, uh, well-rounded way to go about it.
Thank you, Mr.
Any other comments? Thank you, sir, under number 11. All right, seeing none, uh, number 12, I have signed up here, uh, Mr. Phil Caleb. Phil, good evening. Thank you for being here.
Good evening. Mayor, councilpeople, ladies and gentlemen, thank you for what you do for the city. Um, just a short concern I have. Um, my name is Phil Caleb. I live at 312 Red Wing Drive here in Jeff City. I also own the spot uptown in Jeff City. Um, I would like to address, uh, the council light on the, the pending bill number 2013-044, I think is what it is, the Sidewalk Cafe. Um, I guess my question is why this bill, which is requiring proof of insurance in the amount determined by the city, and the purchase of a permit to use the sidewalk, is only being directed to the restaurant industry? Uh, a large majority of the merchants use the sidewalk on a daily basis to display their products with the hope of increasing their sales. More sales equals more tax revenue to the city. However, they're not required to purchase any insurance, or to provide any insurance information to the city, nor are they required to purchase a permit, to my knowledge, for such use of the sidewalks. If this is truly is a concern for the city, I suggest we are all required to play by the same rules. I think we're all in agreement that we must need to keep our business districts clean, and that a proposal set forth in this bill, which is addressing this issues, will hopefully go a long way to accomplish that use. Speaking for a few people downtown, we agree that the city needs to be clean. We don't have a problem with trash cans and coming up with plans to keep the city clean, but, um, we have some questions about why it's just, the restaurant is just packed out for this insurance, and that is a liability issue for the city. I think the liability is everywhere. So, uh, based on that, I thank you for your time, and thank you for, uh, for supporting the city and giving your time for the city. Thank you, thank you.
Phil, thanks for being here. Any, uh, questions of our guests or questions of staff? Mr. Caleb, I think, uh, Councilman Scrivener has a question.
Phil, thank you for coming and, and, uh, speaking on behalf of, of yourself and others, uh, downtown. I guess I do have a question, because this insurance thing has been kicked around a lot, and there's been a lot of discussion about it. Would you mind sharing with us what you think is an adequate amount?
Oh, we're insured for a million. I, I, I believe that, it's not that you're requiring us to provide insurance. I'm asking, if you're asking our industry to provide insurance, isn't the same liability there with, uh, sidewalk sales and people up and down, sitting on city sidewalks, or sitting on city benches that are provided by the city to eat? I mean, liability is liability. I do agree that we need to be insured, and, you know, to answer that, I'm not trying to evade the insurance issue, okay? If we're gonna require it from one business entity, I think that, if, if, if the liability is there in the district, I think it should be required by all of us.
You know what you said, uh, about having a million, that, that's kind of the word that we got, that that's pretty much a general practice.
Sure.
And, uh, so anyway, thank, thank you, your points were made.
Phil, thank you. Tell Eva I said hi.
Thanks.